Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of this district was to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Welcome. Anne Rose?
Present.
C. Hill?
Here.
LeShawn?
Here.
Thompson here. Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should be sobering that item up for discussion. Visitor statement will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor's time. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Item F. Recommend a motion for the consent agenda to approve the regular board of education meetings of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Well, session meetings of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four may extend to an April payroll in the amount of one million five hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and twelve cents as presented.
Motion.
Thank you. One moment.
Motion by Anne Rose DePim, I wish to...
Anne Rose, yes.
LeShawn?
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C. Hill?
Yes.
Those names, yeah.
Um, city communication. Item H, informational item. Um, employee request from Maria Jones, public first to complete, compile a salary database. Requesting to file information that to the distance of superintendents. Current salary years within a row, size and amount of the company. So, employee request has been there. Um, board report. Do any statements we have any before?
None.
No? No board report. I'm going to spread a report. Dr. Lauren, Lauren, what is that?
Good evening, community. Um, we didn't have a presenter today. We're going to present the science that would like to get adopted. We're going with SABUS Elevate, and we have Mr. Bob Recker.
Hi. If you need to come close to this, can you hear fine? Yes, it's fine, alright. So, yes, we're going to talk about the Elevate Science Program, K-28, I believe. As we go through, we're just going to talk about the program components, first of all. This is a hands-on, um, program. It's fully hands-on. There are tips available because we know that it's when students are doing the science that they learn the science. As far as the book, it is a consumable book that the students are writing in, that we, we know that they take, um, they take pride in, in doing their work within their books. So, it's that write-in student edition. Teacher edition is the hardback. Um, it is available in English and Spanish. Along with that comes the engineering and design notebook so that students can really work on those NGSS science and engineering practices as they're doing these activities. And everything that is available in print is also going to be available online digitally on our web learning platform, SABUS Realize. Everything they get in print, they can also get digitally as well. We really want to focus on these three pillars as we talk about the program. We know that it is important that students are exploring very local, relevant phenomenon, uh, to their everyday lives. And that is during that investigation part. We also know that it's important that students use, um, experience their coherent learning progressions with those engineering solutions with real-world problems that they're going to be facing when they get out into the job world. We also know that it's important that they're demonstrating and showing proficiency in those NGSS standards. Those cross-cutting concepts, science and engineering practices, as well for disciplinary ideas. I do want to play this very brief video that talks a little bit about how equity and inclusion can shift.
At SABUS, we support teachers in creating inclusive classroom spaces where students have a voice and they feel heard. Where diverse perspectives are respected and embraced. And where student agencies value and encourage. We value the importance of equity and inclusion as critical components to creating learning environments where students feel safe, welcome, and able to share their thoughts. And we know educators are as passionate as we are about incorporating these values into the curriculum used to teach students. To ensure our solutions are meeting the cultural needs of educators, we created the SABUS Learning Framework. These guiding principles will inform how our curriculum supports teachers in helping to improve student achievement. Here's how it works. Through strategies designed to cultivate voice and critical thinking, the curriculum can help teachers create spaces where students feel comfortable to share experiences, contribute to the classroom, and advocate for their own needs. The curriculum provides opportunities for students to learn how to listen and question productively, teaching them to value and embrace the perspectives of others, and expanding their own understanding of their peers and their environment. The curriculum also provides teachers with opportunities to customize learning experiences that the students choose for themselves and that they find most relevant to their own lives, promoting and enhancing student agency. These components that make up the SABUS Learning Framework are the key to unlocking and fostering positive and meaningful academic outcomes. Outcomes that are built on strategies and opportunities designed to instill a love of learning by honoring all student voices, allowing students to learn from each other, and developing the skills students need to feel confident and make an impact in the world around them.
So, it is very important that we are supporting the teachers and engaging the students through their own lived experiences and being able to honor all of those student voices in your classroom, allow them to learn from each other, not just from the teachers. And how we do that is through the student learning experience. The way that the program is set up is that we always are going to introduce and launch with a phenomenon, uh, that is relevant to the students in their lives. Then we send them on this, uh, series of sense-making, gathering evidence, differences-making activities because we know that they build their understanding as they go back and revisit that phenomenon. And eventually, when they can apply what they've learned to a new situation, is what we know the true learning has taken place. This comes from the teacher's book. So, I just wanted you to see that the next-generation science standards are called out, air in the book. We're going to make sure that those science and engineering practices, disciplinary core ideas, and cross-cutting concepts are covered. Teachers can look in the middle, so your six-eight teachers can see what those students are doing currently in the classroom, but they're also seeing what students have come in, uh, in those previous grade bands, where they're going in those grade bands after, and also paying close attention and headed toward those college and career readiness skills that we know our students are going to need in the future. This is an example of how we might start one of the topics. It starts with that phenomenon. So, right here, we're going to introduce a firefly. I'm just going to ask the students, what makes that firefly glow? Glow. There's no right or wrong answer. It's all about student discourse, hearing their voices, hearing what they have to say, bringing previous knowledge, talking about what makes this firefly glow. Talking glow, I keep saying the wrong thing, um, talking about their experiences. And then we just go on from there, immediately go into a connect lab. Here, they're going to be working with, um, baking soda and vinegar. They jump into a lab that, where they are sort of designing the process. They're not a step-by-step process because we know that when students follow step one, step two, step three, step four, they become really good at just following directions and following steps. But we want students to think critically because that's what's so important in the future. After doing the Uconnect lab, you might jump them up on a quest. Quest is going to be one of those topic-long, um, projects. It's a problem-based learning activity where students are faced with a problem. Here, it's how can we build a hot pot pack? And then every time they learn something in a lesson, they apply that. So, they're building this quest as they go through the entire topic. And eventually, at the end of the topic, is when they present their quest findings, also given a rubric for how to do that. Every one of the lessons comes with one of those hands-on labs. You're going to find all the materials for it in this quest. You're probably familiar with the, the five E learning model, engage, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. In our program, you will find that, but you're going to find it more along what we call the CISD because we're concerned with what the students are doing more so than with the teachers. So, we really want to know how are the students connecting to that phenomenon more than how the teachers are going to do that? We're also more concerned about how the students are demonstrating their knowledge at the end rather than how the teachers are evaluating it. So, the five E is there. We just want it to be a little bit more student-centered instead of teacher-centered. This is what it will look at like in the teacher's guide for those lessons. You're going to see that those next-generation science standards are called out at every one of the topic lesson plans. Here, we're going to go through that connect, investigate, synthesize, and demonstrate. All of those are activities to do, but it doesn't mean they all have to be done. We even give the teachers those little time clocks there to tell them about how long each one should take. And if they're short on time, we've highlighted the ones that are obviously deemed to be essential for making sure that all of the standards are covered. So, if they're running short on time, they can look at those and do just those standards as well. I'm going to jump in right now to one of the interactivities that students will have the opportunity to do on that digital platform, Realize. These are really, really important because if you think about worksheets, the worksheets are ready. But if a student gets a worksheet back three days after they turned it in, and it took them two days to look at it, the red Xs on there don't mean much, right? Because it's a week later. If students are corrected in real-time while they're doing it, they have to pause and say, wait a minute, why did I get that wrong? Oh, now I get it. And it makes more sense if they're corrected in real-time. So, teachers can take grades on these, but they're also great tools just to use for those assess on the spot. Also, we have virtual labs. I'm looking through it. Here we go. And this is really sort of an aha moment if we think back to that firefly just a moment ago when we picked off the phenomenon. Now, students are doing a lab where they're said, you know what? Your task with trimming up decorations for a school dance, and we want you to make glow sticks. So, they're going to go into this lab setup and be able to manipulate these things. This is not a lab they could do in the classroom because of cost, time, money, all kinds of constraints. They couldn't do this. But as students go through this, I hope I can let this one long enough. You can see that they're combining, there's a notebook, they're taking notes as they go through. So, just like they're doing the lab, they're still collecting the data. And now they're going to collect all of these different, and they're going to be told what to do, they're following the process, notice that they're turning green. So, now we're going to put it in this last one. They also have the ability to turn the lights on and off after they do each one of these, um, different processes. It tells them what happens. I'm going to talk to help them catch up with it. But you're going to see just in a moment, when they put it in, this next one's going to turn green, and it looks slightly a little different shade of green. So, they know something is different. And when they turn the lights off, they're going to see that that was the combination that glows in the dark. And right there is the aha moment. Now, they see that, they think firefly, oh, the firefly we talked about at the beginning must be having a kind of a change going on. They can take a picture, they can put that into the notebook and take notes of that as well. We also give them opportunity to engineer, solving real-world problems. The challenge here is can you turn contaminated water into drinkable water? Allow the students the opportunity to go through one of these science and engineering practices in that notebook, one of these in every single one of the topics. So, back again, I want to make sure that we know that we're hitting these three pillars of exploring a lot of phenomena, experiencing engineering challenges, and demonstrating the proficiency on those four things. I did talk to Lori a moment ago, I didn't, um, put it in here, but I'll briefly say that also that e-text that the students have also has the functionality working with Google to be translated into over a hundred different languages, many of those offering audio support as well. And I always say that that's great for the kid, it's great for the teacher, but to me, the power there is what that does at home. You're giving those parents a gift of being able to help their child with homework, and that's truly what we do to them. So, I thank you so much for your time for letting me talk about the program, and I look forward to coming back and helping you pick it all up. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, Dr. St, I mean, Mr. Fred Bicker. I'm thinking of...
Projecting the future for you. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm going to start this by saying, uh, the fireflies that were mentioned in reference are much cooler than what I'm about to present. So, I'll try to be, uh, brief and get right through it. Um, um, what you have before you on this sheet here, um, it was also sent out this morning, but, uh, also is in front of you. It's just to print out kind of where our finances are through March thirty-first, which will take us through the first three quarters of this fiscal year. And, um, this, you know, trying to do updates throughout the year to figure out where we are and how we're planning to finish, um, based, you know, which is different than where we projected way back in August and September. Um, so, on the sheet here, I'm just going to walk you through this briefly. I have just, uh, the highlighted numbers in yellow kind of, uh, are the important ones. In the first column are the, the funds that we have, um, funds ten through ninety. And then, um, the balances in the next column, you see the beginning cash balances for each of the funds, and then the total, uh, little over fourteen million, which was presented at the levy presentation and the budget. And then we have the budgeted revenues, we have the budgeted expenditures, and we have a projected deficit of two point three and change. Um, and so, and then also in the year, uh, we did a transfers where we moved some money into capital projects fund to pay for these capital projects and, uh, costs that we've been incurring. Uh, we did that in November, December, uh, as a board, uh, at the board meeting there. Um, and so, uh, that was there reflected. And so, what you have then is a, um, estimated budgeted, um, ending fund balances, uh, there in that column of seven point seven. Um, but now, you know, we have a little bit more updated numbers. Um, in the column, or in the rows below, the blue, uh, you have the greens, just revenues. I did break it down by fund, um, because that's just going to follow the path on budgeted. But just overall, I believe we're going to fall a little bit higher than what was budgeted, which is a different thing, of course. Um, and then the red below is the, um, uh, section is the, sort of the, the budgeted expenditures, our actual expenditures through March thirty-first. And where this gets tricky is some of the funds are fully expended as of March thirty-first, depending on the timing of payments. Um, so, what I've kind of done is taken where we were as of March thirty-first and based on expenses that we incurred in April and at this board meeting, what I anticipate will happen in June, um, I did, you know, my best to give you an estimated year-end, where I feel that we're going to land at the end of the year. And, um, one of the areas that you see is, is a surplus really is the capital projects. Um, that's a tough one to budget in, in August and September because we didn't know when we're going to be starting the summer's construction projects, where we would be as far as the last summer's construction projects. We have some things that are, uh, didn't quite get completed this year that our general contractors are still working on. Um, so, really, uh, we have a favorable balance in the expenditures, uh, mostly due to the capital projects, sort of preferred payment that will occur to that school year. Um, but when you combine the, um, projected, more favorable revenues, uh, the more favorable expenditure balance, um, you have in the top, going to the top in the far-right column, you have where I believe sort of our estimated where we're going to end up with our fund balances at the end of the year, maybe around fifteen-two. And so, um, this is a little more favorable output financially than what we were talking about or what we were budgeting. Um, this just gives you an up-to-date, actual numbers and projections. Um, aside from just the knowledge and your understanding of where we are and where we protect to fall, um, this also dovetails into, um, action, board action item in K nineteen. You know, that's that bond resolution. Um, we have about two million dollar capital projects scheduled for this summer. And then we're looking forward, of course, to next summer, um, some various construction projects with the east side here of Heritage Middle School. Um, so, um, the K nineteen is, the, the school board is basically, we've kind of gone through the process, embedded through all the legal parameters and everything that needs to get done to make this happen. And so, at K nineteen, um, the board then will be authorizing the school board president and the superintendent to approve bonds, not to exceed five million dollars, and not to be at an interest rate greater than five percent. And then from there, the details will work out that, um, it'll be very, if at all, I mean, zeroing back to the taxpayers, uh, and then what they'll see as a, here, paying for bills. Um, and so, but the board is authorizing the school board president and the superintendent to take the next step, which would be to sell the bonds. And then it would be in the end of July, and then we hit our next fiscal year to pay for these capital projects. So, this financial information ties in with that. That's all that I have. I would be happy to answer any of those questions that you may have at any time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McLaughlin.
Good evening.
Evening.
I've got, uh, two things to report out tonight. Uh, one, we did talk last month about how registration's open, so please go ahead and get registered. Uh, the one thing that we were not ready to share at the last board meeting that we are now, but if you've been reading the scoop, uh, you will already have known, um, to simplify the registration process, we have stopped the requesting of residency documents, um, right off the bat unless you're a new to district. Uh, there will be times, uh, for a lot of different reasons, that we might ask for residency documents still. Um, so, but again, we're kind of eliminating that first step, uh, to free up a lot of things, make life easier for all of our parents, um, as much as we can. So, that's a big change from all the years that I've even heard back of how we've done registration. So, we are again trying to make it easier. And with that said, uh, to make life even easier for next year, uh, as a district, we are unifying all of our communication. Um, it was officially announced today in today's issue of the scoop, um, and you will all be blasted with lots of emails, um, over the next couple of weeks and months about our transition over to Parent Square. Uh, we are going to be unifying all communications, phone, text, email, messaging. It's all going to come from Parent Square now. Uh, where right now, you're getting communication from about two or three different resources. You might not realize it, um, but you are. Uh, but with our unification to Parent Square, it'll be, uh, handling everything from our newsletters, uh, parent communication from the teachers, from the district, phone calls, emails. It's all in an app, so you'll get push notifications. Um, you'll be able to see all of our previous communications right inside the app and a lot more. Uh, so, in the next couple of weeks, you will be receiving an invite, uh, to make sure that you get in and register your accounts. You already have all your information, so what it is, it's kind of just verifying that, hey, this is you, um, and also to be able to install the app, so you have all the communication ready at your fingertips to start. All right?
Thank you.
Um, this is Cambridge. Good day. How are you guys? I'm Dr. Los. Good to see you. I didn't know it was you for a second. Okay, so, let's start off with the academics. Our math team won second place in the South Cook Math Bowl. Congratulations to the Washington, uh, state of the students, recent accomplishments. This is the first time that Heritage placed so high, so this is definitely a record-setting situation, right? We're setting records around here. Um, talking about the setting records, let's talk about the athletics. Congratulations to our eighth-grade girls, four by one hundred relay team in the season. The girls made history. Y'all got your picture back. Awesome. Made history this past weekend by becoming the first Nationals relay team to win back-to-back medals for the state finals. Our seventh grade, yeah, yeah, our seventh grade boys also placed in various events, so they did great too. So, we're really excited. We're making history, right? Um, fun times, the house updates. Our last house day was a couple of weeks ago. It was a versus day, so it was house versus house, or teacher versus teacher. Here's where we announced that the Dosty House, the Orange House of Friendship, had the most points for the school year. House days are always fun times, always a good time to stop curriculum and just spend time with the students. Uh, during the last house meeting, though, the new leaders were chosen, they went through, um, an application and interview process to become leaders. So, the new leaders were chosen, and then at that meeting, they passed the torch, the eighth-grade students passed the torch to the next group of house students. So, we hoping that we cultivate and create these little leaders, right, to go out and change the world. Um, a next pop in circumstance was the eighth graders who celebrated the dinner dance, uh, last Tuesday. Students looked absolutely stunning in their formal attire. I was happy to see them dancing. They actually danced. I bet some people that they weren't going to dance, but they were dancing. I got them on tape too, so if ever they want to come, spend some time, have some laughs. We celebrated the eighth-grade students last Friday at the promotion ceremony. So happy to see it gone, so going to miss that group though. We had a great group of students that suddenly would have the pleasure of being part of their journey. Um, they're gonna, they're, we're leaving them to be the best versions of them, of themselves and live their best lives. I wish them all success. Now, let's talk about this week. The last week, three-days week. Tomorrow is the all-school field trip. We're going to Lindwood Skating Rink. Uh, this is the end-of-the-year behavior incentive field trip. We're excited to spend some outside time with the students. Um, on Wednesday, we're having our step-up day where all the grade levels are rotating to the next grade for the pool day and spend time with the next teachers to talk about expectations and what this grade level is going to look like. That evening, we're doing Aladdin Junior, so I hope you guys can come out, families come out and support this field and the drama team. Uh, that starts at six o'clock. It's maybe six, it's seven, but I'll, I'll confirm. Um, and then, fourth graders are coming out to hang out with us during step-up day as well, so that's going to be fun times. I think that is it. I am so grateful to see the end of the school year happen. You guys have a super fantastic day.
Thank you.
Now, I just made one good comment. Now, I was talking to Ms. Cambridge in regards to the house. I was really, really impressed by the house, and how they had, they all the same, and they all took themselves. And I was so, it was so awesome, so not having to go to a group of children, um, you know, being elevated and to know who they are. So, thank you. Fantastic, I think that's had our first very...
And the play that has happened.
Oh, it's that, that, thank you so much.
Alright, good evening, everyone. As we're just kind of trying to take a breath, and I think everybody's doing that, and we're coming to the end of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four journey. Um, and it has been a blast. I have to say, uh, again, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Cambridge and to HMS because anytime any of us shines, it makes us all look good. Um, what I wanted to start with was as we end this journey at the elementary school, um, just kudos to the staff because one of the things that we've tried to do is we've tried to make school a place where you want to come every day. Because those people that are up in the school doing these things, that, these events and these activities and these lessons and all of that, well, guess what? We just have your interests, and I think that we have those students' interests from kindergarten all the way to fourth grade because as we close out the school year, it has been nothing short of fantastic for those teachers that left nothing on the table. We wanted to make sure that when we end the year, we ended the year strong, just like we began the year. Kudos to the members that participated with the Nathan Hale Field Day, that committee left nothing on the table. It was absolutely outstanding. Outstanding. Kindergarten through fourth grade, and I would dare to say something that I've been waiting to say, probably if you would have attended, reminded you something. to say, probably if you would have attended, reminded you something that you may have experienced yourself as a child growing up. We didn't leave anything, didn't cut any corners, those kids came, those kids left tired, with a bunch of tired teachers, but it was very, very good. The other thing, then Friday, we ended with a student council. Fabulous job, because one thing leaks into another thing. Fabulous job by the student council, the sponsors, as well as the students, this was their end-of-the-year assembly. So they pulled everybody together outside, they've been working on a recycling challenge, they've been trying to get students, and they have tons of bottle caps that have been brought in, that when, I believe it's 400 pounds of those, they will have those recycled, if you will, into a bench, and the kids have been eating it up, and it has just made for just excitement to just keep going these last few days. Finally, tomorrow, if you have an opportunity, we talk about the eighth grade going on, that's the part I love about education, we're all responsible for somebody going on. If you have the opportunity, from 9:30 to 11 o'clock, stop by, you will see the, or be a part of the end-of-the-year celebration for those kindergarteners. They came in in August, just green as all could be, and now we're delivering on some first graders that are, that are, if you will, veterans of the school system. So again, if you have an opportunity, please just drop by, it's just fun, it's just exciting. And then, if you're not able to catch that one, tomorrow, in the library, from 12 o'clock, 12:15 to 2 o'clock, the early childhood program will have their end-of-the-year celebration. And we have several students from our early childhood program that will be moving into our kindergarten, and that's how this thing is supposed to work. We're supposed to feed off of each other, get excited off of each other, and keep this thing going, and I have to tell you, I think that's what we're doing. So hope this will be tomorrow, we can make it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Recommended motion. Recommended motion for school K-3 transfer contract for 2024-2025 school year.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose, yes. Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Philo State, yes. No. Teal? Thompson?
No.
Teal?
Yes.
Item 4, recommended motion to approve the purchase of elevated science degree cases aged by 10 years for three, Jane Sankar, Jaylen House, House, and Mr. P. Poole. 10 years, 2024. I agree, recommended motion to approve the reemployment of the following care professional. Tracy, Autumn, Carol. Motion?
Ms. Shore, motion, second by Ambrose, Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Teal? Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Motion for, no.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, recommended motion to approve the reemployment of the following care professional. We have Tracy, Autumn, Carol, Roxanne, Aleah, Viviana, Crystal, Carol, Artelie, Jerry, and Carol.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose, yes. Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Item 4, recommended motion to approve math modules to oversee and implement a math jump start program for incoming third- to eighth grade students, July 29th through August 15th, not to exceed $30,000 from the ESSER 3 Fund.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal? Thompson?
No.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommend, number five, recommended motion to approve the cost of the annual student conference for six board members and superintendent with state play in Las Vegas, October 28th through October 30th.
Motion?
Second.
Ambrose, yes. Teal?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Thompson, yes. Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the summer garden with Mr. Mont, $30,000 per hour as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose, yes. Ms. Shore, yes. Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Seven, recommended motion to approve the purchase of elevated science degree cases aged by 10 years, a current science curriculum in the amount of no more than $307,000 paid out of the ESSER 3 General Fund.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Teal. Ambrose?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the purchase of intro reading journals, closed reading workbooks, dot com, certain U of M, carport, a current ELA curriculum in the amount of no more than $17,000 paid out of the ESSER 3 Fund.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ambrose, Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson? Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the installation of research by ET, Allen, and Bry, and Heritage Middle School in the amount of $29,152 as presented.
Motion? Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the contract for their purposes with the Army Care Service for the 2024-2025 school year.
Motion? Second. Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ambrose, Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the fast funding agreement between Honeybrook and Echo for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the amended ISPE calendar for 2024-2025 school year.
Motion? Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the resignation of Monica Smith, prenant at Heritage Middle School, effective immediately.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ms. Thompson. Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Wanda Luad, fifth grade teacher, VA, $18,000 value of $55,000, $22,000 effective by 2024-2025 school year, pending for festival background check.
Motion? Motion by Ms. Shore, second by Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Thompson? Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Philo State, yes.
Motion to approve the cost of physical eye contact in Chicago for all seventh board members for 10th for November 16th through 17th.
Motion? Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the following contracts for the 2024-2025 school year for Dr. Laurie, Laurie O. Strannan, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. David Springer, Chief Financial Business Officer, Ms. Julian Green, Director of Public Services, Dr. Mike McGowan, Director of Technology, Mr. Chantelle Henry, the Principal at Heritage Middle School, Mr. Joseph Dolan, Assistant Principal at Heritage Middle School, Mr. Joseph Kent, Principal at Newton Hill, Mr. Joe Starkey, Assistant Principal at Newton Hill, Ms. Calvin Nosa, Minister of Assistant Supervisor, Ms. Sherry, Ms. Pedro, Ms. Booker, and Ms. Linda County Executive Assistant Service Superintendent.
Motion? Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Thompson. Ambrose, yes. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Amanda, although for fourth grade teacher at Newton Hill, effective by the end of school year 2024-2025 as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the one-year 2024-2025 transportation renewal contract for kickers' school bus line with a 5.5% increase for, from 2023-2024 contract.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Ms. Shore? Thompson?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $5 million for general obligation into tax school bond for the purchase of increasing the working wage fund of the district, providing for the levy of direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on state funds, authorizing the sale of state funds to the purchaser there.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the final ISPE calendar for 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the Echo Executive, Executive Board of Directive Evening Amos Well, Revolution, authorizing and approving terms of executive management of council services by Echo Fund, Echo Independent Contract Agreement with Expert High and Low Student, Echo Independent Contract Agreement with Jordan Holger, and Echo Independent Contract Agreement with Hope, Hope Fair, Fair, the as presented.
Motion? Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Shore.
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
Recommended motion to approve the employment of Ms. Cash, the summer work with first student effective by 2028-2024, value of $14,000 per hour, could count in minimum wage for 24 as presented.
Motion? Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Thompson. Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Ms. Shore?
Yes.
Philo State, yes.
I would say this move is a challenge, excellent work.